I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, September 5th, 2018, 2018 at 6:00 PM. And all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioners Cecil and Wickwire, who are absent and excused. We'll probably see Commissioner Wickwire here soon. I have not heard from him, but hopefully he'll be joining us shortly. This is the time in the meeting where we will have non-agenda public comments. And I've been made aware that we have a few people who want to speak. So if you could, please limit your comments to approximately three minutes per speaker. And if you're ready, please come forward at this time and please state your name and address for the record. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. I guess we don't have any public comments, but thanks for coming tonight to join us and see what we're doing here at Planning Commission. With that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. So when you guys have had a chance to read them, go ahead and entertain a motion to certify the minutes. I move to approve the minutes from July 18th, 2018, and July 25th, 2018.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The minutes stand approved as written. No new business this evening. And there's not a public hearing tonight, so we will go ahead and move into the study session tonight. Will be led by Bruce Blackburn of the city. And we'll be studying three things tonight. Site plan design review process, grading permit, and retaining structures. And study sessions are a time for just people to voice any concerns or questions or things they like about the process. And we thank the staff for putting this together for us. Okay, Bruce, hand it over to you.
Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. This, of course, is a study session on three potential code amendments. And that would include site plan design review, grading permit regulations, and retaining structure regulations. Now, this is a study session, so the purpose is that there be no action taken this evening. And really, this is intended to introduce these code amendments to the commission and members of the public. I'm going to start by going into these individually and discussing the objective of each of these provisions, as well as a little bit of background on them. And I think what we'll do is we'll kind of take them one at a time. And so basically, what I want to do is that on the site plan review process, we've got kind of an objective. And it's kind of in your staff report, but maybe not as quite stated as clearly as this. And that is to create a new process to ensure consistency with site plan requirements. And of course, as the Planning Commission is well aware, we have a lot of site plan requirements within the Bothell municipal code. That includes things like setbacks, critical area regulations, parking standards, a host of provisions about how you can access a site from a fire safety standpoint. There's a lot of site plan provisions within the code that we want to make sure we take care of. What's happening now is that site plan review is occurring during the review of grading and building permit applications. Now, grading and building permit applications are the detailed plans that are submitted, and they are just huge sets of plans and regulations that cover all kinds of really high detail things, everywhere from nailing patterns to how tall a building to the type of structural elements that are within that provision. We want to resolve site plan issues prior to the submittal of this construction level documents. And a couple of reasons for that. One is revisions to those big, huge sets of plans is really costly and time-consuming. And this would be kind of similar to other site entitlement provisions we have within the code. The best example being preliminary subdivisions, where you go through a site entitlement review, and you get that site entitlement, and then you come in with your detailed construction level permits. Now, this is a chart that's within your packet that basically identifies how we would like to craft the site plan review process. And you can see that the left-hand column is the proposal. The middle column is the grading permit review, which is very often used to do this kind of site plan review. And that's without site plan review. So you can see the process is virtually the same. The difference is that at the end, the director issues a site plan approval, and at the end of the grain permit, it is a permit that is issued. However, we believe that with a site plan review process, the grain permit review will be much more expeditious. We also believe it'll be easier. And there's a bunch of process steps that will not have to be repeated, specifically pre-application conferences, notice of application, comment periods, SEPA review, SEPA comment periods, and those items will be taken care of at the site plan review process. That means the grain permit should be a much smoother and expeditious methodology to get an application. Plus, and we've identified this a couple of times before, but it really does bear repeating, is that those site plan permit review documentations are really huge. We're talking about 60, 70, 80, 100 sheets of paper. If there's one thing missing the site plan incorrectly, and I'm talking about tree retention, maybe they didn't quite get the parking stall ratio correct, they have to redo those site plans, those permit documents. So it's really expensive to do that kind of a concept. So I think I'll stop my discussion there and just pose the ability for the Planning Commission to ask some questions and for the Planning Commission to have a discussion. And maybe there's some additional information the Planning Commission needs. Do they think that this, the proposal addresses the objective? And give me some general directions for our public hearing, which will be held October 17th. So at that, I'm going to turn it back over to the Planning Commission.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. And this is kind of a free-form discussion here. We can just go ahead and, if you're ready, just go ahead and take the mic and ask questions to other commissioners, or post comments, or ask maybe more clarification from Bruce. So at this time, if people have questions, go ahead and please feel free to start.
I have a new question. Explain, you mentioned cost, that these are costly. It is strong tonight. You mentioned these are costly. Who's bearing the costs?
Well, it's an interesting point. Primarily, the applicant or the developer. But it's also staff. And when you look at, from the staff's standpoint, it's time. It's hours in the day that we are spending on these kind of application provisions. So, and this is a classic situation. You spend about a day looking at the site plan review process or a grain permit. Well, it's, you've got, you have some inconsistency you identify. You have to send that back, and then you have to get it back and review it again. So it's kind of both ways. We both benefit from the city as well as an applicant benefits. So, and again, as we all know, the burden is primarily on the applicant, but it does have a city cost.
So you're moving, you're separating the SEPA process in particular and moving it forward into this site plan review process. Are you going to have some guidelines to ensure that there's a sufficient level of detail to make a SEPA determination?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, one of the things that we've provided is that there's a fairly detailed list of submittal requirements. And it dovetails very well with our current SEPA submittal requirement for early environmental review. The City of Bothell has an early environmental review provision that we allow applicants to come in and say, hey, look, I just want to get an idea of what your threshold determination is going to be, I'm sorry, what the SEPA determination will be. And essentially, what we want to do is we want to match that within the site plan review process. And there's a lot of good reasons for that, and one of which, of course, is the state says that we should do environmental review at the earliest possible stage. So it dovetails very well with a lot of the actions we currently do.
On that note, it's, on page three, F, SEPA review, it says "may request" and "early environmental review." So was there, I mean, a reason for not making it maybe a requirement at the beginning? Is it because maybe it doesn't even get to the SEPA process, so they don't need to do it upfront? Or what was the reason for that?
Well, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is that that early SEPA environmental review really is something for the applicant to make their own decision on. And while we would prefer to do it early, and I think most applicants would say the same thing, we want to get the SEPA process out of the way, we still have to have it as a "may," and we have to do that option. Now, certainly, we could consider doing it as a required item. You know, that would be kind of one of those policy questions I would, this is not a nice thing to bounce back to the commission. Do you believe SEPA should be a required element within the site plan review process? And so we can go kind of either way there.
So it is a requirement anyway, right? Eventually?
Eventually, they would have to do that, yes, indeed. Yeah. So it, you know, and again, one of the things that's also interesting is that on the site plan review, we base those thresholds upon the SEPA thresholds. And there are certain thresholds, levels of development, that have to go through SEPA review and some that do not. And basically, it is a structure that's 4,000 square feet or greater, 20 parking stalls, and some, you know, moving earth of more than 500 cubic yards. So those are some things that we've built into this process. So if you have a development that is going to be more than that threshold, they have to go through the site plan review process. And within the site plan review process would be that, okay, you can ask to have early environmental review as part of that process, which we believe has a great benefit.
So this is an option for the applicant to choose to have this separate and early site plan review process?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, actually, the site plan review process would be required. It's only if they decide to do SEPA with the site environmental review, the site review process, that they'd have to go through the SEPA process. So basically, if you look on that table here...
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, and I'm confused.
All right. Cool. We can address that. Basically, the idea is that this process here, you could have it here, or what you'd do is that instead of the completed here, they'd have to do it at this level.
So, okay, again, is the site plan review process now going to be separated?
Yes.
By requirement? Okay.
Yes.
Then the question is whether or not the SEPA, then where the SEPA process occurs is the option of the applicant?
Yes.
Whether it be the site plan review process?
The option of the applicant.
Okay.
It's, right now, it's "may."
Okay. It wasn't clear to me. I don't know, did you catch that?
All right. Here's basically the idea. The concept is that...
I hear you saying it, I just didn't see it.
No, I think that that's a good clarification. We have to go through a SEPA threshold determination for any project of a certain size. And it's the same sizes that we've identified for the site plan review process. What we've built into the site plan review process is we have the environmental review that can occur during the site review process if the applicant picks that option. The concept there is that, who would not want to do it that way? But still, the concept would be that maybe they don't want to provide some additional data. Maybe there's some studies that they just don't want to have. Maybe we've identified some deficiencies in their traffic information report or something like that. We say, look, if you want to have an environmental review, you have to get these adjusted. Well, I don't want to do that now. I just want to get my site plan review process and go to the bank and get some more money, and then I'll come back with the grain permit and do the SEPA review. And we want to make that flexibility available.
That doesn't make sense to me, but I mean, I'm getting it. I just, I don't understand why the thing, this thing is broke. It sounds like it's a very strong requirement that it seems like should need to be figured out up front to be able to proceed, but I don't know. Maybe, I don't know what the other commissioners think.
And I think that's, I think that's a good point that you bring up, is that perhaps the SEPA should be part of the site plan review process. It would, it matches really well with our preliminary subdivision process, which does require a SEPA threshold determination before that approval occurs.
Well, flipped another way. Can you make, can you, the city, make a determination on a site plan review without a SEPA process?
Yes.
Okay.
With this, with this clarification, you have regulations, so you can have a project that's consistent with the regulations. And that was basically what they'd be getting with the site plan review process. Okay, your parking, your building, everything is consistent with the regulations. Here's your approval. Environmental impact would be the second half of that. And the idea behind it is, okay, now that we've got more detailed information with the grain permit or something like that, we can evaluate environmental impact much more, much more reasonably.
Well, I'll, I'll accept or trust that you've given this a proper legal review, but my experience has been that government actions require an environmental review with certain exemptions. And I, it's been a while since I've looked at the exemptions. So if you're telling me it's within that, okay. But I'm just a little confused about an action of this nature, not having that environmental review before it's taken, so.
And I think, I think that's a legitimate item to identify, is that, you know, the Planning Commission believes strongly that we should do environmental review early, and we try and encourage applicants to do that process. But the state law gives them that flexibility to do it at other times, so I was just kind of following that state law provision. But we can certainly decide that we want it to have that as part of the site plan review process.
I don't know if any other commissioners have any thoughts on that, or...
How about the timing of the public comment or any open public hearings? Is that going to be affected by shifting this around?
And that's a good question. Basically, the concept here is that this would follow the same notice of application, notice of application comment period, notice of SEPA determination, threshold determination, and notice of SEPA comment period, but no public hearing be held. These are not public hearing eligible types of projects we're talking about. The idea behind it is if it was a public hearing, that would be a planned unit development, a subdivision, or a conditional use permit, it would go through that public process.
It seems kind of interesting that something so significant can happen next door to your house and for it not be in the code to have any kind of noticing that it's going to happen or something.
Oh, and I'm sorry. When I say notice of application, that is notice to adjacent property owners.
Okay.
And posting to the site with the board, as well as we publish it within the newspaper record, we find the board, and the mail notice is the most effective method.
But this, the notice doesn't happen until later in the process, right? It's almost, and like you said, maybe it's not per view to public review and per the Bothell municipal code, okay.
Well, and...
So at what point, on the chart, can you kind of just point to where?
Absolutely.
I get this in the mail that says my neighbor's going to...
So, so here's how the process works. The applicant comes in for a pre-application conference. That's a technical review by staff with the applicant to identify some deficiencies they may have in their early design concepts. Then what happens is the applicant comes back and makes the submittal of the information required in the code. And that's the site plan and the things that we've read with our report. We do a completeness review of that information to make sure it has all the elements that the city needs to begin to the process of that project. Then what happens is the city issues a notice of application. And the notice of application is the document that is mailed to people within 500 feet of the subject property is posted on the site with one of those big, you know, four-by-four notice signs. And we publish that in the newspaper record. Folks have 21 days to make comment to the city on the application that has been received. Only after that comment period expires does the city go into consistency review. And the idea behind that is we want to make sure and take that public comment that we've received on a project and look at it from a consistency review. Okay, is this project really consistent with the regulations? And I will tell you that the tool we use for those notice of application is that people know the site way better than we can. You know, people who live adjacent to it, or somebody who's, hey, I've been driving that, by that site for the last 20 years. I can tell you that I've seen whatever happens to be. They have a much better sense of what the property conditions are, and that's something that will tip our staff review folks off. They can say, oh, hey, hmm, we got to go take a look at this back corner, we'll say. There may be a wetland or something like that. So they do get noticed early on. The same process is followed with a grain permit review. Their difference is, we're talking about the SEPA review, not the notice of application review, NOA review. And so the concept is that the SEPA review is, again, it almost repeats the notice of application process. It's just a little different type of flavor that we're asking folks to talk about. Instead of, hey, there's an application in your neighborhood right next door, we want to hear your comments about it. The SEPA says, there's an application next door. We believe the threshold is a determination of nonsignificance or a determination of mitigated nonsignificance for these reasons. What are your thoughts about the SEPA impact of this piece of property? And then they're geared toward that SEPA process. So there's actually two opportunities for folks to talk, to speak to the city about the application received.
I guess, in a perfect world, I guess, which this isn't, but I just, I feel like it's the sooner the better that people around adjacent properties would know about the process even before, because I feel like a lot of stuff gets done with the city before, and I understand, before people are noticed that they, you know, they kind of, but I guess it's, that's what's been working, so I guess...
Well, and, and I'll tell you about the pre-application conference, for example. The city doesn't know until two weeks before the conference, we're going to have a conference. That's basically the timeframe, two to three weeks after we receive that. And it's usually not the type of information that people can really review or get a real good handle on it, because a lot of times, it's just very conceptual concepts. Completeness of review is important. And the reason I say that is because you want people to review the entire information file, if you would, on that project. You don't want them to come in and say, well, I read all this stuff, but where's the wetlands report? Or they don't want to say, I read everything, but there's, where's the traffic study? Well, it's not complete yet. Well, then why did I come down and spend all this time reviewing everything, and it's not a complete application? We want to make sure the application is complete. Secondly, this is what state law requires us to do. So a lot of this, we're following state law. But it makes a lot of sense to make sure you have a complete application before folks have to come down and look, take a look at that file.
Okay, so I'd like to walk through these again, at least at a very high level. So if you're going through the process without site plan review, do you go through both of those columns?
Ah.
First, the site plan review process, you get the site plan reviewed, then the grading permit process, and the grading permit is reviewed?
Here's how this would work. What would happen is if we have the site plan review process, the middle column wouldn't exist anymore. Basically, what you do is you take care of the site plan review process, and then you go to the column on the far right.
Okay. So if you're going through the column in the middle, then...
That's the current process that we go through, because a lot of times, what happens, we don't have a site plan review process currently. So what will happen is that we will get an application come into the city, and it's usually in the form of a grading permit application. And that's the process they currently have to go through right now to get their grading permit issued.
So there is not currently an approved site plan in this process?
That's exactly correct, yes. And that's where we've identified that we have a missing component within this, within the City of Bothell.
See, we do the left column and then the right column in the new proposal.
You got it. Sorry.
Okay. Let me take this time to just look at, if anybody else... Yeah, what's the, you said 21 days for, for review?
Notice of application, yes.
What's the, the review period for SEPA?
21 days.
21, they're both 21 days.
Yes.
And then there's an appeal process for SEPA, but it doesn't show that there's an appeal process for site plan?
The appeal process and the comment period run concurrently.
Okay.
Yes. Now, here's the thing about the site plan, is it would be a type-two decision, all right? So basically, the idea that the director would approve the site plan process, I didn't include the appeal processes, but any decision of the director, which is type-two permit procreation, can be appealed to the hearing examiner. So you have a local appeal process available to you if somehow you review the director's decision on the site plan and say, well, I think you've missed something like that. You can appeal that to the hearing examiner. And then the hearing examiner would hold a public hearing.
Okay. So they could easily run concurrent?
They can.
Okay. Do they, do they typically, with the way it's set up now?
Well, usually, what happens now is that few people appeal a grain permit, because it's a technical permit, and, you know, it's like, got all kinds of stuff in it. So very few people appeal those types of permits. What they do is they, they comment on the notice of application, and then they comment during the SEPA review period.
So regardless if we move the SEPA up as a requirement early in the site plan process, review process, we'd still likely get more public input early in the process, because they're looking at something they'd recognize?
And I think that's one of the good things, when the commission is identifying maybe the site plan review process should have mandatory SEPA, there is nothing wrong, quote unquote, with that. In fact, I think a lot of applicants would say, yeah, we want to get that process finished as fast as possible, so that we know what we're facing with that particular application.
Do you know off the top of your head what other jurisdictions do?
One of the things I was trying to do is I was trying to come up with a way to somehow synthesize what other jurisdictions do, and there are so many different approaches. Just about, about half the jurisdictions have some form of site plan review process that you go through. They have many different terminology things for it. In fact, that was one of the things we were trying to, oh, well, let's see what they call it. And the names we were getting were very, very artful. And we were like, oh, well, that's not it. And then you come back later, and you, oh, well, no, actually, that's it. So we really had a tough time. And again, this is one of the things we find is really true, particularly when you talk about process stuff. Every jurisdiction has their own little method to do this. But there are quite a few jurisdictions that do have some form of a site plan review process that you have to go through.
Thanks. I want to understand where the drive is behind this. Why are we having this discussion?
That's a good question. And there's a couple of reasons. One is that we have had quite a few projects where they, again, we, they basically submitted those really detailed construction plans, and they had some fundamental error with the project. Tree retention is a very classic one. And it just took a lot of time to get through that, that, just that process of getting the project to a point where it was consistent. In the interim time, the applicant was spending, you know, I'm sure it was tens of thousands of dollars on engineering fees to try and get these, these construction level permit-type documents done. And it just seemed like it was a waste of everybody's effort to keep bringing in these huge sets of plans that is only really talking about one or two issues. And, you know, you could probably take care of that in like four or five set of plans, four or five plan sheets. So that's a big driver right there, just to get these type of things squared away before we get that, into that detailed construction level review.
So you would say that the development community would be pro these changes?
They have, they, I've heard some different things from, we talked to a couple of, just about the last few weeks, and someone said, yeah, we appreciate the concept of the review process, we think that has merit. But they all expressed the same concern, was it, how much more time will this add to the overall process? And that's the real key. And that's why we want to make sure this is something that is efficiently done, so that we can show some value from their standpoint, as well as our own standpoint, that, look, this is going to be more efficient in the long run. Instead of having to spend, you know, whatever the amount of, I wish Roger was here, because he could tell us, but however much money is revising these, the detailed construction plans at a very costly rate, you can have your architect just prepare some fast, quick, simple site plans, and we can be there.
That's my biggest question, is the timing. It'd be nice to see a schedule of the existing process versus the new and improved, because when I read through it, I'm thinking, like, let's, let's say now it takes 10 weeks to go through the concurrent review of the site plan details and the building permit level information, and you throw two weeks on for muddied issues at the end of that process. Instead, now we're looking at six weeks, followed by 10 weeks for that construction. It seems like we're going to add on to the overall duration, but maybe the second half, maybe the CD level review constricts a little bit, and we save some time there. I don't know. But I do see the benefit of breaking them apart and not having kind of everything reviewed at once.
And actually, that, what you're identifying is really one of the drivers behind this, because we do believe this will make the grading permit level documentation much faster, because all the review disciplines will have seen the project, they understand the fact that they've, the site design has been through a process, and it's the same site design. Okay, great. Now we just got to focus on the specifics of this project, how big the pipes are, how thick the concrete is, how thick, you know, whatever, whatever the other provisions that we look at from those standpoints. We think that that will greatly expedite the review process, because we won't have to be spending a bunch of time looking at the tree retention plan. And I keep coming back to that, but I should do another example. The critical area regulations, making sure the site plan complies with the critical area regulations for buffers and things like that. We have already done that. So that grading permit review will be much faster from our standpoint. But you're absolutely right. We're going to have to basically work out exactly how we're going to process these internally to make sure we get a really good, expeditious process. going to process these internally, to make sure we get a really good expeditious process.
By changing this process, will we be driving development away from Bothell? Will this scare developers from coming to our community? Because by putting this, front-loading this, I, you know, I guess a developer would have to show up with more paperwork, more, more due diligence, before they even got started, as opposed to maybe the, you could perceive the current process as slimline?
Well, actually, I don't think the current process is slimlined at all, and in fact, we have some people who will probably tell you it's not very streamlined. I, I just don't see that as a real serious concern. Again, we're not talking about a really detailed level of review, we're not doing the same type of stuff we would do for a building permit. We are looking at the site plan, and okay, yeah, setbacks, bam, 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 you know, critical area regulations, the buffer's right, go, show it on the site plan, those are really fast level of type of review actions. So, we believe that there will be, and then, and again, whenever you add a new process, it takes a little bit of time to get through it, but we think that on the end product, it'll be quicker. And again, because we're not doing that review during the construction-level review. So, the review has to happen sometime, let's just get it out of the way at the beginning, instead of having it muck up the middle part. And particularly, these two items right here, you see where I say consistently receive review and resubmit a review? Okay, sometimes that is a round-robin time of thing that nobody likes. Applicants don't like it, we don't like it. We don't want to have a whole bunch of these back and forths in this, in this period, and that's always a challenge for these, the, well, well, the way that we're processing these things right now.
And so, Bruce, on this topic, I live in the Lower Maywood area, and I'm sure this exists all around town, but I'm more familiar with the neighborhood I live in. Right now, the grading, I mean, I guess there's different, there are different aspects of grading, what grading is. But, for instance, there's a property near where I live, where the house was demoed, trees came down, I don't know how long it's been, it seems like it's been a year, at least. I mean, is this an example of, is this, would this be a good example of why we need to do this process, why we need to have the site plan done up front before some of the other stuff's done, or am I, is it not related at all?
Yes and no, it depends on the size of the project that you had. Do you remember?
I think it's like a, it looks like it's going to be like three homes.
Three units?
Yeah.
Okay. See, that would be under the threshold, so in your example, it wouldn't, but let's say your example-
Oh, that's a good point, because it's over five.
Let's say, let's say your example was six units, then the site plan review would kick in, they would have to go through that site plan review. And one of the things that's really interesting about the site plan review is the fact that we can assure that they do, and a big one is tree preservation, and we run into this constantly about making sure we get tree preservation going. That would be taken care of at the site plan review.
And so, what are, just thinking about this maybe in the future, what are some other options for smaller projects? Like, this is, this is like an acre, so it's not, it's not small, I mean, maybe three-quarters of an acre, and it's just been sitting there, it looks terrible, people live all around it, but apparently it doesn't meet this threshold, so is it just, are people just kind of out of luck, and they just sit there as long as it wants to sit there?
Boy, that's hard, because considering what's happening in the market right now, it's like, really odd that it'd be-
I mean, I think so too, but, but-
But, that's-
A sign did go up, like a site sign just finally went up, but it seems like it's been eight months.
Yeah, and, you know, here's one of the things that makes it really-
Just trying to figure out what's happened.
In our, in our shoes, I would, in the municipal government shoes, is the fact that we can control a lot of behaviors, but some things we can't control, and one of them is the pace of development. Yeah, we can control how long their permit is good for, and things like that, and hope they follow that process, but somebody can, you know, honestly drag out that type of a review process a long time. Short of requiring some type of a bond, that we do have that ability, but we're trying to be, you know, we have to be very limited in what we can do, because I think we've got some state law provisions about when the city can require a bond. That's, would be the only thing I could think of, just really quickly off the top of my head, that, that we might be able to implement on some level. Now, again, usually the smaller-sized projects, which are a lot of times is a local resident who's owned the property for many years, "Hey, I'm going to finally build my two or three houses," or three, three units in your case, it's tough for them to do that type of bonding things, it's very expensive. That would be the only thing I could think of from our ability to help your situation. Although I would note that, having been here forever, I can tell you this, we have had projects in the past that sat for a long time, and we were talking multiple years, in a unfinished state. In fact, the, the one that comes, pops to mind real quickly is it off, just off of winning a drive, there was the, there was the Regent Wood Condominiums, and the developer had cleared the site, had constructed a lot of the utilities and the foundations, and then some type of a economic crisis hit, and it was left that way for a long, long time. And it was not necessarily pleasant. It was tough to see that.
Well, thanks for explanation.
So, your memo asked for direction on what we'd like to see for analysis?
Yes, absolutely. Is, is there something else you'd like to see here?
I think one of the things I, I wouldn't mind looking at, if it's possible, is to kind of have a staff member break down how long they think that this would add to the front end of the process, versus how much time we would save in the grading permit review?
Okay.
Or an estimate of that?
We can, we can have them give us, give us some good estimates on that.
Perfect, thank you. I think that's all I would be looking for next time.
I'd also be interested in hearing specific feedback you've received from the development community.
Yeah, and see, next time we'll have a public hearing, so we'll get that opportunity. A, a lot of the, the community has identified, we just got this thing a few days ago, so we're still trying to digest it, but by the 17th, I'm sure they'll have a much more thorough analysis of it.
Yeah, conceptually, I like it, and in, you know, 1232060, you do specifically lay out what will be part of it. It does seem to me, with all of those specific elements, SEPA should be part of the process, so I'm certainly inclined towards-
Yeah, I've got that for sure.
Okay, it does sound like we, Jason made a good comment about maybe bringing it up in the process might bring in more comments from people, or that may happen. On page, just real quickly on page-
Just to clarify, I think that it would happen regardless if we moved that up in the process, just because we're changing the way that we have, we, we're changing what we're sending out to the community for review, from a grading permit to a site plan review.
Okay.
So, by the nature of that, we're already going to invite additional comments. And I guess the jury's out for me on whether moving the SEPA up is a good thing or not. I think I'd, I'd be curious as to what advantages, like you say, there would be for anybody to delay that, but there might be a good reason, and if, if there is, if we don't want to, or we want to consider that reason, I should say.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak to some of the development review staff in, in the past. Primarily, what I can tell you what their comment was, is that they were really confident that applicants would take advantage of that SEPA process as fast as possible, again, just to get it out of the way, but I'll talk to them a little bit more about some of those perspectives, and we'll get a chance to hear from the development community next time.
Thanks. Let me go again. I noticed that there's two 1232060 sections, I don't know if that was by design, total knit, not a big. Line 15 and line 20.
Oh, forgot to change the number, thank you.
And on line 11 on that page, it just has a number two, and it doesn't have anything next to it?
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
It was one of those errant deletions that didn't show up in the version, so it's not supposed to be there.
And?
Unless you want to fill it with something.
I don't have anything in my mind at this point.
Well, there, there is also, there are also two options on 1232110.
Yes.
You're asking for input on that?
Yes, and let me, let me explain a little bit about what, what that does. Essentially, what was identified, it was that maybe there's a way, and, and you kind of identified that, well, what if there's somebody who's in a real hurry, I guess, to have their project approved? And the concept would be, okay, well, maybe there is a way to do a concurrent review, where you would do the site plan review process and allow the applicant to submit the detailed construction level plans at basically the same time, so they'd be kind of running concurrently there. And so, what you're seeing is that you're seeing a couple of the proposals that staff is still honestly reviewing and trying to consider what we might want to do here. The first one, of course, is, you know, really a simple one, but the second one gets a little bit more detailed, and I'm not expecting the commission to give me an answer that bad. And the reason I provided both of them there is so that the commission could see that that's one of the things that we're still kind of right, working on as a staff level as well, and I think we'll probably get some input from the development committee on that as well.
Have you received any sort of indication from development community on that, if it's even something that they would use?
They, they would like to use that, they would like to have that as an option, but we'll get a little bit more, again, it's time, it's all, it's about the time, so. And so, we kind of went with some different concepts, and, and the first 110 is a much simplified version, the second one is a more detailed, a little more complex analysis that the SAP would go through before we'd say, "Yeah, you can do concurrent review." Those might change quite a bit by the time you get it on the 17th, just to warn you.
Granted that the details listed in the second option may change, the, the fundamental difference is, the first option is the director's discretion.
It is much more discretionary, yes.
And the second option, you're identifying key issues which would result in the denial, and whether these, this is the list, or more, fewer, or different, is the question.
Yeah, and the second one is a better procedural step, honestly, because we like to have some really definitive reasons as to why the city does any type of an action, and that, the second one gives us those, those reasons.
Yeah, I would think clarity, you know, and the development community too, I would expect would like to know what the, where the goalposts are.
Yep. They always like to know that.
Great, well, I'm looking around, I think we'll, we've made our way through there. If you guys have additional comments that you think about, just, I guess you can just email Bruce with them on that particular, but we can move on into the grading permit code amendments?
This one's a little less complex, from the standpoint that the objective here is to create some new grain permit regulations that would govern grain, govern grading activities within the City of Bothell. Generally, grain permits are administered by the Public Works Department with some assistance from community development from the permit technician's standpoint. We want to upgrade the current grain permit regulations, because they have not been updated in a long, long time, and the other permit provisions we have been updating over the years, we just have not done that with the grain permit applications. It is well past time for us to take a good look at it and create some new regulations in this space. And these are primarily administrative provisions, you'll see there's stuff about time periods, and you'll see some, some mental requirements, and fees, and things like that, a lot of there. There are a couple of standards within there, and one of which I wanted to call out to you, is that right now, the standard is a two-to-one maximum slope gradient on a site that is allowed. This proposal would identify that, change that to one to three, or three and one, basically three feet horizontal for every one-foot elevation change. Currently, it's two feet horizontal for every one-foot elevation change. And that basically looks like this, here we have a little person over here to the far right, and that shows you the difference between a two-to-one, well, you can see it right there, over 100 feet, the difference in elevation change that occurs. Now, there are some advantages to allowing a two-to-one, because you could probably do fewer retaining structures, which we're going to talk about in a little bit longer, but generally, staff thinks that we should kind of change that to a three-to-one, unless you meet certain criterias that we have actually within the, the proposal before you, that basically, right, okay, if you have a critical area, or you have existing vegetation, or some of those things that are kind of, you know, really high, identified as really important community asset, assets, we want to protect with a little steeper slope. That's when you would be allowed to have this little steeper. So, this is one of the items that I did receive a comment from a development committee individual, and said, "Yeah, you're doing the three-to-one, we still think two-to-one is an appropriate thing to have in the code," and we'll have more discussion about that in the public hearing, of course. So, just like last time, questions the commission may have, if there's some additional information you'd like to see, and it does it kind of, you know, address the objective, which is to create this new grading permit application. And one of the questions we're going to have from the commission, and that is, should we do a maximum slope? And I don't want to get too much into it, because I'm sure that the commission wants to have more time on this, but is it, should it be three-to-one, or two-to-one, or some other options? So, let me know what you'd like to see us to provide you, so that you can feel comfortable making that decision.
On that calculation, Bruce, how's that measured? Is it from the lowest point of the site to the highest point of the site, and it's an average across, or?
It's any, oh, sorry, it's any individual slope on the piece of property. So, even if it's at the very middle part of the property, let's say an applicant says, "Well, I want to put a two-to-one slope here," the code would say, "No, the maximum we'll accept is a three-to-one slope." And so, anywhere on the site where he does a sloped kind of a, a treatment, he'd have to have a three-to-one ratio versus a two-to-one.
Okay, so a retaining wall at the back end of the property, you wouldn't be measuring from the top of that to kind of the street elevation?
Nope, nope. It's, it's any individual slope, any place where you have a slope in the site that's created, would be a maximum, well, three-to-one in this case.
Okay.
On page five, there's a, under, this is under grading permit applications, some mental requirements. There is, I don't know what our other commissioners think, I just, I guess I want to get some history on why, it says, "Are within fif-" so, perform, location of any building structures in a property, fifteen, basically, it gives a 15-foot number, which, where does that come from?
Okay, are you on?
Oh, sorry.
Number 10 on page five?
Line, line six on page five.
Okay, okay, great, yes. Basically, what that is, that there are some standards that we have within our building permit regulations, and essentially what happens is that within a certain dimension of a building, and within the building itself, the regulations that are applied are actually those of the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. It's not these regulations, and that's something that we need to make sure we follow, because the state building code is a document that we have to adopt almost as is. And so, the concept is that we don't want to create something that isn't here that might be in conflict with that. So, the, so what we're doing here is that we're saying, "Look, if you're within that area, you go, you, you, you basically administer this through the building permit, not the grain regulations." That took a lot of time to figure out how to craft that, honestly.
Okay, so you feel pretty good about that, the way that's drafted, the 15 feet, I mean, you like that, okay, got it.
Bruce, I'm just wondering if I'm looking at the three-to-one backwards, but in my mind, contractors and developers in general are going to try to limit their cut-and-fill, and we in, as a city, want to reduce non-native soils coming in for filling up a site. The only benefit of having a steeper grade would be, I guess, stair-stepping in development so that everyone has a view, but in general, that's going to be costly. Wouldn't the two-to-one ratio sort of preserve the natural landscape a little bit more than forcing them to reduce that grade?
And, and you bring up a very good point. Where is it? Hold on here. Now I have to find it. That is one of the provisions that we have identified. God, this thing's gotten just huge. Yeah, I think that's where it is. Ah, here we go, here we go.
Which page are you on, Bruce?
Ah, yes, on page seven, line numbers four to six. And you can see here, the increased gradient, this is basically what the director would do to allow that increased gradient, you have identified that. do to allow that increased grade, you have identified that. And first of all, reduce potential adverse impact to critical areas. The second would be permit installation of transportation improvements. I think a very logical third one would be retention of existing vegetation.
I'm seeing nods, so I think.
All right, good.
That's a good bit there, yeah, thanks.
Yep, you bet.
So a much more general question.
Yes.
I see this is the third draft. So any story about, you know, any significant changes or, you know, things that have evolved along the way that we should be aware of?
I can give you a really good story, but, you know, here's the situation.
The mics are on.
This, yes, they are. This is a very complex regulation. And we've been doing a lot of back and forth between different design disciplines. And again, this is primarily a public works engineering function. But we also have folks from surface water who have a great interest in what happens with the grade because it changes what they do on the surface provisions. And of course, you know, building has interest, so it's taken us a few iterations to get to you, yes. But I thought you would like to see that because you say, hey, somebody's really been looking at this stuff.
Noticeable.
That's a, that's a, that's a good story, right? All right, thank you.
I'm going to steal this one from Commissioner Hampton. What do other jurisdictions have when it comes to the, to the grade?
Ah, yeah, and that's again, one of those things where everybody's a little bit different. I see a lot of three to ones. I do see quite a few three to ones. I also see a lot of two to ones. So it's, and without taking a lot of time and, okay, these guys do this, these guys do this, these guys do this, I haven't done that, but I have observed that quite a few jurisdictions actually do have a three to one.
You would say 50/50 then between the two?
I, I.
Ballpark.
Yeah, it's probably more 40% do three to one and 60% do two to one.
And then I have one other annoyance question. So under, on page eight, the grading permit expiration is 180 days for the additional renewal. And the other regulation we were just working on has a year renewal. Like, is there, is there any sort of overarching plan to bring, introduce consistency? It would drive me crazy personally that we would have these different regulations.
And one of the things we're doing, in fact, an element that we are still resolving is how to make sure all of our permit provisions have the same timeframes. And interestingly enough, our entitlements are usually one to two years, our permits are usually the 18-month thing. And I will admit that we haven't actually fully resolved this yet. Right now, the general consensus is make it 18 months, but we may have something different.
I think just for people doing business with the city, it would make it easier if we just had a lot of consistency. And I know this may not be the right forum to deal with it, but I would encourage the city to consider bringing that up in the future.
No, and I, and I can identify that we share that desire to have that. And that's one of the things that we've been, okay, well, which one wants to, anyway, I got you though. I'm going to mark that.
So in the hopefully rare case that there is some type of penalty or violation imposed, I went to the missile code and looked at 11 dot 20.
Twenty, yep.
And it seems a little bit, it's, I guess it's really hard because I guess every project's different. It seemed a little bit vague. There were no, there were no dollar amounts or anything. It was mostly just may incur these fees, staff time. Do you see many examples? I'm really glad we're going through this process. I'm glad we're doing this. Have you seen many examples throughout time where grading has happened, you know, maybe ahead of schedule or without permit?
Yes, that has happened. And one of the things that we've got in here is we have a restoration process within this section that we thought was really important to include. And basically, because right now, we don't have that, and we want to make sure that was in there. What you identify is the great mystery to me, I shouldn't say it that way, how we do enforcement. It's such a convoluted, tough legal process. And I don't know how the code enforcement officer keeps her head straight after she goes.
How many code enforcement officers do we have?
We have one.
Just one?
Yes. Now, having said that, we do have some people in surface water that do code enforcement from a surface water standpoint, but from a general site design zoning code, critical area, we have one. But the concept there is that, I think that if you would allow me, let me take a little bit of time to kind of talk to her a little bit about, okay, what is the process? Because there is a very carefully defined process. And I'll be honest with you, she's had some successes, but only because she's just, you know, bitten into it and not let go. And that's what you need in the code enforcement officer. And we got a good one right now. It's like, wow, awesome. Anyway, but it is, it is a process that has to be followed. And you identify the lack of fines and specific numbers. And I know that there is a general miscellaneous, I'm trying to remember what it is now.
And it's okay, I mean.
I think it's, I think it's only 250 a day or something like that. Anyway, but let me do a little bit more research on that and get you back.
Okay.
Exactly how that process works because it's, takes a while for me to understand it, too.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any other questions with regards to the grading? Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and move over to the retaining structure code amendments.
Can we start with the easier ones next time? I like the, like how that was just, we had the hard one up front and then.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm writing a note here. Okay. Isn't that one of the things they tell you is to save the best for last? Retaining structures. This one has got a little bit different focus. And this is basically, the concept is create regulations that address concerns expressed by downslope residents. But we still have to continue to allow retained structures because they're so important within a community like Bothell that's got so many hills. Now, to be straight up honest, the current retained regulations are, need clarification badly because they can be interpreted in many different methods. And some recent installations of retained structures have raised some aesthetic concerns on the part of downslope residents. And that's usually the people who really notice this kind of thing. We've also got some clarification to a couple other sections of the code that have kind of been, the staff have identified, you know, one is the setbacks, the other is fencing and retains, and freestanding walls. But, ah, here we go. What you have here is this is a couple of recent developments we've had in the city that we have had some retaining walls installed. And the one on the right is the one that is, you know, somewhat more, more visually obtrusive, we'll call it, because it's basically 10-feet wall, a tall wall. And on top of that is a six-foot fence, and then, of course, you have a 30-foot high piece of structure on top of that. So this type of an approach is something that we want to get away from, honestly. This over here is a better approach because it does have the walls broken up with a little bit of a setback and broken up, and then if the fence on top of it. But I would note two things. One, this is a three and one slope right here, so you get a little bit more elevation. And the other is that this is separated by four feet only. It's not separated by very far. Because we have some issues we need to do. Now, whenever we look at something like that, we always like to create this kind of a model site. You know, you don't really want to use real examples. And so basically, what we did is we have a model site that has characteristics that we're seeing in the field. And that includes slopes of 10, 20, and 30%, 35%. And again, the orientation is rear yard setback to rear yard setback. Again, that is usually what we see out there, is the orientation that we have between the new development and the existing development, if you would. And again, every, every single family residential structure within the city can go up to 30 feet, so I've identified that as one of the baseline provisions to talk about. Now, we got to realize that slopes, I'm sorry, houses on upslope properties will always be higher. It's just the physical fact. And in this case, what I've done is I've shown the difference between the 10%, which is not a very steep slope, a 20%, which we have a lot of, in fact, we have a lot of 20 to 25%ths, and a 35% slope. And you can see that even with a 10% slope, the base floor elevation at which the house measured is four feet higher than your adjoining property. 20%, it's eight feet, and at 35%, it's 14 feet. So you're already starting off at a disadvantage if you're downslope from a site property. And that's just what's going to happen. There's not a whole lot we can do about that aspect. What we can do is we can control how retaining structures are constructed within those setback areas and actually even outside the setback areas. And this is an illustration of how you could really take the current regulations and set them up so that you had four-foot tall structures that were separated by four feet within that side yard setback, and you can get up to a 21-foot elevation change. That's not likely to happen because that stuff is expensive, but this is what could occur underneath the current regulations. The proposal would be to change that, and through a couple of methods. One is to make sure that retained structures are no taller than four feet high and are separated by two times the distance of the downslope retained structure. So if this is a four-foot tall retained structure, you have to have eight feet of separation between the next one. And this one also can be limited, is limited to only four feet high. Again, it's in the setback. And then you have to have the four to one slope that is our recommendation. And you only get about a 12-foot high change here. One of the elements that, that we think is important is the fact that it keeps that somewhat more open look. Again, we're, we're seeing some changes in elevation, that's only to be expected, but it's not much worse than what you would expect underneath a normal situation if you had a 20% slope. So this is our proposal to go with this type of an approach within setback areas. And again, this just kind of compares the two. This is the proposal in black, and that's what is allowed right now underneath the current regulations. So we believe that we're, we're taking a pretty good approach here from that standpoint. Side yard setbacks would still be a six-foot tall retained structure. We have literally hundreds of these within the city. And that's mostly because, you know, we have a lot of slopes that kind of go up the hillside with the roadway, and they can have to set the roadway at a maximum elevation of 15%. And so they have to take up that retaining, that earth elevation someplace, and it's usually in the side yard setback. And a six-foot side yard setback seems to be working pretty good. Most people seem to find that acceptable. So we aren't really proposing to change that. However, we do think that we should require a one-foot setback at the, from, for the retained structure. We want to make sure we don't have a situation where somebody could accidentally, you know, put it on somebody's property. And again, I know it's kind of a civil thing, but we think with a little bit of a one-foot setback, we might be able to alleviate some of those concerns. Now, once you get outside the setback, the proposal is to go with a maximum 12-foot tall retained structure. And that separation would be one times the size of that downslope structure. So in other words, if this is a 12-foot tall structure, you'd have to have 12 feet until you had the next one. And again, the slope between it would be three to one, which is basically what our proposal is for grading permits. So the concept there would be, yeah, you might have a 31-foot of elevation gain, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, but at least you're 25-ish feet away from the adjoining property. So this is kind of the proposal we've got going on right now from the retaining walls within and outside setbacks. One of the things we're definitely going to do is that the code currently has some aesthetic standards to it. You know, you have to have the walls look something like this with some kind of treatment. And also, we've had some treatments for vegetation or sculpture or something like that. We want to make sure and keep those provisions. So I'm going to let the commission ask questions and give me, identify additional information and go through this process one more time. Thank you.
If we go with the stair stepped option, would there be any provision for maintaining that section of vegetation? I mean, I think it looks better than the large kind of blank concrete wall that we looked at, but a lot of times, those areas, especially if it's on the downhill side of your house, you might not touch, but the other person's looking directly into it.
You know, and that's one of the things that we've identified because when you have these little setback areas, particularly if you have a really tall wall, it kind of becomes a no man's land. Well, you maintain it. Well, it's your property, you maintain it. And so we're hoping that by not having, and we're not proposing much of a setback from the property line. We're allowing to go within one feet of that property line. And we think that that might help control that, that aspect, that, that people wouldn't just leave that downslope area, okay, at least they can see it from their backyard. And we think that's part of the, the concept there. It's really hard to require landscape maintenance beyond two years because that's the maximum bonding we can have. So once you get past two years, there's no requirement to maintain it. Again, if it's in single family, the folks usually have a tendency to take care of it, not always, you're correct. But we usually go out of that two years and it's, it's up to the person to maintain that vegetation.
Yeah, that's a really good point to think about because that, that is happening a lot in the city. And I even noticed when people do plantings or whatever in the summer or whatever, install a bunch of arborvitae and they, they just, you know, they die because you plant them in the summer, they're not going to survive unless you really stand on top of them. So, huh. Yeah, anyway, it's interesting to think about. I do, I like the idea that you brought to us with regards to the one-foot, kind of little.
It's just a little bit of a relief there.
Also because, I mean, you know, humans make mistakes, and even surveys sometimes are incorrect. And so that also gives surveys a little bit, maybe a little bit of a break if a survey's done, is off just a little bit. And you put in this huge retaining wall and they're like, oh, no, actually, your property line is here, it's not here. So it gives a little wiggle room.
Yeah, that doesn't happen much.
Doesn't happen more.
Anymore, okay. What you identified is, we did have an element a number of years ago where there was a discrepancy between one datum point and another datum point, but that's all been resolved now.
Okay. I was also going to question the maintenance, landscape maintenance. And you made reference to a two-year requirement. Is that included in most of these projects?
Well, our, our standard citywide landscape requirements require a two-year maintenance bond for that kind of thing. So, and, and yeah, for two years, you know, our inspector will go out and when it's time to release the bond and say, okay, yeah, you had five, whatever happened to be here, six over here, you don't have them, replace them. And then once they replace them, the bond is released. And then, yeah, it's, it's not a perfect solution by any stretch of imagination.
And we have seen two very hard years for landscape establishment. And there are a lot of dead, there's a lot of dead vegetation around the city.
Yes, there is.
I noticed on page two, there's additions to barbed wire fencing and razor wire fencing, which seem unrelated to anything we were just talked about. Do you want to give us some background on what's going on with those?
Yeah, and, and what I can identify is that sometimes we have fences and freestanding walls, sometimes freestanding walls are looked at as retained structure. We want to make sure it's a fence and a freestanding wall, and that's, that's the one. But as far, as far as the barbed wire and the razor wire, barbed wire is allowed for animal husbandry and pasturing type of things and secure facilities as identified by the police department. Razor fire, wire is only allowed for secure facilities as allowed by the police department. So it's just a higher level there. And what's happened is that we've had some issues where we had barbed wire that was installed for a security reason, but the code didn't really specify how we would determine there would be a security breach. And we want to make sure, okay, get the chief of police involved, let them verify, yes, this is indeed a security situation down, and we've got at least somebody qualified to make that call instead of somebody saying, oh, I need it for my backyard or something.
So something that's not clear to me, and I'm totally nitpicking on this, but it doesn't make it clear like how the chief would identify that. Like, like, is there, is there another section of the code where that's clearly outlined? Because it seems at the discretion of the chief of police.
And, and that's come somewhat purposeful, but I hear what you're saying. Maybe, I don't want to come up with a list of the type of facilities because you always miss one. And, and, yeah, if the chief of police is worried about security, I think we usually pay attention. But I hear what you're saying. With the commission's approval, I think if you want me to, I can take a little bit more of a look at that.
So I just have one, so I'm actually fine with it as is. I really don't actually have any objections to the changes. I just have one feeling. We didn't talk about it at all, and yet it's kind of snuck in here. So can you in the future just make sure to like? So can you in the future just make sure to like call it out to us so that we know it? Because, I mean, some of us, I mean, we should read it, but it's entirely possible we might not have talked about it tonight.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
But from my, but, but from my perspective, I'm, I'm fine with these changes. They make sense to me. I'm fine with the chief, chief of police being the ultimate authority because you are right. You're not gonna be able to outline every single business that this would apply at. I just want to make, make it very clear why we're making these changes and, and make it clear to the citizens how they could enact these in their businesses.
Yeah, and, and you know what? You identify a very good point. How do we let you know without writing a, I don't know how many page memo I've got here, eight or nine, ten page memo? So actually, that's one of the things that's interesting that with the new director, he's trying to, okay, how can we get it so that you get the really, the meat of what's happening within like a couple paragraphs? And we're struggling with that a little bit is, as planners, we like to write, and that's something we need to re-change, change how we do approach that. But yeah, you're, you're, you bring up a good point.
If we decided to go with the three to one or two to one, which we were talking about earlier, to do some thinking on that, I don't know what the commission's saying. It sounds like we're, I don't know, maybe we haven't come to a decision. But some of these, some of the, the really good examples that you put together here were like three to one. So they're gonna be quite different, right? If we don't go with that?
Well, you, you could, you could look at it from another standpoint. That is, if perhaps between retained structures, you have one standard, which is three to one or four to one or whatever it must be. The rest of the site, it'd be another standard. And so that's kind of what, how we would view this is how that would play is, okay, if you're setting up a retained structure, you know, terracing provision, you're gonna follow the standards with the, within the zoning code. Once you get outside that setback, or if you're not talking about that, then the grading regulations would take effect. And whether it's two to one or three to one, that would be applied.
Okay.
Maybe I didn't explain that enough.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
Okay, fair enough.
No, you did, you did, you did.
Well, here, let's, let me, let me find a good, let me find a good illustration. Okay. If you look on page five, the illustration on the top of the page. And I'm looking at.
Oh.
That one. There you go.
Okay.
Let's say that you've gotten all the way to here, and this retaining wall on the right is your last retaining wall. There's no more retaining walls. From that point upwards, you could follow the grain permit maximum gradient of, of three to one or two to one. Between the retained walls, you follow this standard. So the concept would be that this is a six to one, this is a six to one or a four to one, whatever happens to be the numbers. And then from here on out, it's a different number. I think what would make a great deal of sense is for me to complete a different illustration that shows that.
Okay.
Because that would really be, and again, I, we're, we're trying to do some more illustrations within our regulations so that people can say, oh, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
But.
That'd be great.
I show.
Yeah, thanks for putting together all of these very good illustrations. You gave a lot of examples.
And, and basically, the note would be, you know, grade maximum pursuant to eighteen oh five, whatever happens to be.
One other quick note on the illustrations, Bruce, since we're touching on it. Page seven, let's see, line item twenty mentions, well, faced with brick, stone, or split face or fluted concrete block is an anchor block, a fluted concrete block? I'm just saying that the typical retaining wall we see does not appear to match any of the illustrations we see on page nine, or on page eight. A fluted concrete block, is that just the standard kind of like diamond anchor blocks that we see everywhere? Okay. Seems like that illustration should be.
If you.
Added if we're.
I'm thinking that maybe that's a good point. If you'd like me to do some more illustrative things, we can certainly do that.
I mean, I would like the clad options and the vegetative options all over town. I just, I think cost prohibitive, it's probably not gonna take off.
Okay, I'd like that. Okay, thank you. I like that.
Okay, did anybody have any more questions with regards to this, training structures? Okay, great. With that, we'll go ahead and we'll close the study session then. Did you have any other comments for us, Bruce?
Cool, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Bruce. And thanks to staff for putting this all together. Shit. I don't believe there's any old business tonight. And, oh, and so we'll be, we'll be bringing this back just on October seventeenth.
October seventeenth is the one this will be rescheduled for, yes.
Public hearing on this, October seventeenth. No business. Do you have any reports? And then Kevin, do you have a report for capital facilities or, or not?
Yes.
Oh, boy. I was kidding.
I'll go through it.
Turn it on. I did attend the capital facilities planning committee meeting August sixth. Councilmember Dur also was there. It was very interesting. It is available online. You can take a look at the projects. Relatively few changes were made through the process. One of the interesting topics we discussed was integrating the planning of Bothell Landing, Blithe Park, and the golf course. Because, I mean, I, I do that walk. They, they, you can look at them together. And then the other topic that came up, that I may be sending a letter to the council member on, goes to plan, parking rather. And the idea was raised that there is parking in Bothell Landing, which could potentially serve downtown. There are a number of spaces there. And my concern is how you would link that, but that wasn't discussed there. But those were some of the more interesting issues that came up to me. Other than that, we went through the capital facilities plan, and as I said, there were very few changes made to it, so take a look.
Okay, great. All right, thanks.
The, the other thing I would say on a personal level, I'll miss the next meeting. I'll be out of town, and I'll miss a couple of the October meetings traveling, so.
Great. Any other member reports? Motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second. We are adjourned.